Village of Indian Head Park Village Board of Trustees meeting for December 12, 2013. Will the court please call the roll?
Mayor Andrew.
Present.
Trustee Schnafer.
Here.
Trustee Walsh.
Here.
Trustee Bailey.
Here.
Trustee Hinshaw.
Here.
Trustee Alaka.
Here.
We have a call, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Please rise and welcome to the House. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to its Constitution, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in law. Thank you. Just like to remind everybody that the village is videotaping this meeting, the official videotape, and that the meeting may be audio or videotaped by others present. Under the mayor's report, just have two short things. One is that I received notice from Karen Lee Arbour, our county reporter of deeds, about the service that her office was going to start providing called a property fraud alert system. We'll have talked to Dave about getting a flyer out here at least maybe tomorrow or Monday, but anyway, you know, it's been in the news about people finding out that their house was sold and they didn't know how that happened, somebody's recording a deed against them and so forth. The purpose of this new program is you can go online and sign up and that will get you on their list such that if there is a deed recorded against your property, they will give you notice that that happened. So at least we would think it won't prevent it from happening, that we should have get some notice if there was fraud going on. And the other thing, because by the time it gets to the end of the meeting, it slips my mind sometimes, so I want to wish everybody here and all the residents of Indian Head Park a very Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year. We've had an interesting year and we've met a number of challenges and we look forward to the new year and going forward in meeting those challenges that we currently have that we carry over and any ones that come out. This time today, we have the consent agenda and that's the reappointment of Steve Bucette's treasurer for the term ending December 31, 2014. Frank Alonso to the 911 board for the term ending October 13, 2014, and reappointment of Tom Bresch as prosecuting attorney for the term ending December 13, 2014. Also on the consent agenda is the approval of our meeting dates for the village board of trustees and our other previously established committees planning its own fire police and the 911 board. So with that, the chair would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll make the motion.
Moved by trustee Walsh for a second.
Second.
Second by trustee Whittenburg. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Can you, Chair, the ayes have it, the motion carries. Thank you. Now we move to the review and approval of tax levy ordinance for fiscal year 2013-2014. The PTEL resolution with respect to that, and then after that's the Village of Indian Head Park matters, and then after that, it will be the CEASPAR levy resolution. So if you may ask, they bring to you the presentation regarding the tax levy ordinance and the property tax extension limitation law resolution. Dave?
Thank you, man. The tax levy, in November, we are required to have an estimate, and we did not change the net estimate of $961,000 for levy for year 2013. This is the document we must pass through December and file with the county no later than the last Tuesday of December, which tells them what to, how to figure out the tax bills based on our, for next year. Everything's done a year in a year, so this is why it's done now for tax here for year 2013 payable in 2014.
Okay, so this is the levy for our, for our property tax for this year. We'll see on our next tax bills in 2014. Thank you, go ahead.
Okay, basically, we, the ordinance itself is 10 pages, nine, 10 pages long. The breakdown is on page nine. The first eight pages, basically, the way this has to be presented in ordinance form is we have to basically duplicate our appropriation ordinance which we passed back in July. So each page shows the amount appropriated for each appropriation section. There's all the sections in general, IMRF, things like that, water and sewer, and then how much of each appro, each section of appropriation is to be raised by the tax levy. Page one, two have all appropriations listed, but nothing raised from the tax levy. Page three is police. We appropriated 5, 1,526,697 dollars. For ease of, for ease purposes, we put all corporate purpose levy line item in that one section, 576,000 dollars. Page four is the rest of the general funds, nothing raised from the tax levy. Page five and the top of page six are water and sewer expenses. Again, we levy nothing for water and sewer. Page six also has motor fuel tax fund. We levy nothing for motor fuel tax fund. Also same with E911. So for general corporate purposes, we have an appropriation of 4,476,951 dollars, of which we see 3,576,000 dollars by the tax levy. Page seven, Illinois Municipal Retirement Fund, we appropriate 206,366. We are looking to raise 150 from the tax levy. Social Security, we appropriated 145,564 dollars, and the amount to be raised from the tax levy is 115,000. For the audit, the audit fund, we appropriated 39,525 dollars. The amount to be raised from the levy is 30,000 dollars. We appropriated for general liability insurance, 93,380 dollars. The amount to be raised from the tax levy is 60,000 dollars. Bonds, the bonds we have are general obligation bonds that were not passed through and not paid for with tax levy funds, so there is no money raised in the tax levy for those. Special Parks Fund is CEASPAR. We appropriated 31,009 dollars and we're looking to raise 30,000 dollars from the tax levy. Couple of things to note here, our appropriations ordinance has that those have 25% contingency, which is why these numbers are much higher than what they are in the budget. So at the end, when you add 576,000 dollars for general corporate purposes, 150,000 for Illinois Municipal Retirement Fund, 115,000 for Social Security, 30,000 for audit, 60,000 for general liability insurance, and 30,000 for joint recreation programs, the total of that is 961,000 dollars. The levy ordinance goes hand in hand with the PTEL resolution, which is a property tax limitation law. And what that is, is we have tax caps. It, and it's the lesser of 5% or whatever the consumer pricing index is, and that's as high as the levy can be. We always levy higher than we know we're going to get, and it's basically a safety measure. And the PTEL resolution instructs the county where we say we're levying 961,000 dollars, say it comes back 920 because of the tax cap. We, the point of the PTEL resolution is to instruct the county, if you have to reduce it, reduce it by these figures, which would be the liability insurance fund by 16.9%, the audit fund by 0.45%, IMRF by 42.25%, and Social Security by 32.39%. That equals 100%. Basically, that's just using the same ratio as we are dollar for dollar levying in those funds. We're saying if you have to take some money away, do it this way. That's the whole purpose of the PTEL resolution. The reason we always levy high is if we levy too low, because of tax cap, we could never reclaim those dollars. So to play it safe, we always levy a higher number than we expect to get, and then the PTEL resolution without fail kicks in every year, and they take a little bit of it back. But if we only levy 900,000 and we were supposed to get 920, not only are we out that 20,000 dollars this year, we're out it every year for the remainder that there's a tax cap in place.
So it's a safety factor, basically?
Yes, we always levy high and have the PTEL resolution to say how to reduce the levy, just to be safe.
Okay, thank you. We'll start with trustees, any questions or comments? Okay, I'd either the ordinance or the resolution, audience? Okay, hearing none, then the chair would entertain a motion to approve ordinance 2013-11, an ordinance providing for the levy assessment collection of taxes for the fiscal year beginning May 1st, 2013 and ending April 30th, 2014 for the Village of Indian Head Park, Fort County, Illinois.
Make the motion.
Second.
Trustee Hinshaw, I think, made the motion, and trustee Schnafer the second. We'll call the police.
Trustee Hinshaw.
Yes.
Trustee Schnafer.
Yes.
Trustee Alaka.
Yes.
Trustee Whittenburg.
Yes.
Trustee Walsh.
Yes.
Trustee Bailey.
Yes.
Motion passed.
Thank you. And then now with respect to the, the resolution number R12-13-1, approval of the property tax limitation resolution for the Village of Indian Head Park. Did I hear trustee Whittenburg made that motion?
This last one?
This one?
Oh yeah, I'll make that.
Thank you. Is there a second?
No, sir.
A second by trustee Schnafer. Roll call on that, please.
Trustee Whittenburg.
Yes.
Trustee Schnafer.
Yes.
Trustee Hinshaw.
Yes.
Trustee Alaka.
Yes.
Trustee Bailey.
Yes.
Trustee Walsh.
Yes.
Motion passed.
Great, thank you. Does it hand out up here? I think we had right, Dave.
Oh yeah, that was the past history of, of the past few years of the tax rates back to 2008 and then the dollar amount for 2011 and 2012, as well as the estimate for 2013. Some things to note, the big thing to note is the drop in the assessed valuation after the triennial, thing, the triennial review after the crash. We went from a high of 184 million in 2009 to 145,000 in 2011. The history at the bottom, when the assessed valuation goes up, because of the tax cap, the tax rates go down. There's a correlation to the two, because remember, the tax cap isn't based on the valuation, isn't based on the, the tax rate itself, it's based on the physical dollar amount we get. If, if we can only go from, for ease of talk here, we can only go from 900,000 to 918,000. All it means is that that's as high as we can go in dollars. So if the assessed valuation jumps up 50 million dollars because of reassessments, that just means the tax rate you pay per hundred dollars of equalized assessed valuation goes down. It doesn't mean that, if, if our assessed valuation jumped 30% a year, that doesn't mean we can get 30% more money. It's based strictly on dollar money.
Can personally, if the, the amount we're levying goes up, but the EAD, the assessed valuation, excuse me, goes down, then the rate needs to be a little bit higher to generate that?
That's correct.
Okay. All right, thank you. Okay, the next order of business is a resolution to approve the CEASPAR levy amount for the Village of Indian Head Park for fiscal year 2014-2015. CEASPAR asked that we addressed this sooner rather than later, so that's why I have it on the agenda today. I have previously distributed, I believe this goes back to 2009, it's just the history, it shows the, that I've distributed to the trustees prior to tonight, but it has the member communities, it shows Indian Head Park. The top part reflects the comparison of member EADs, and the bottom part is our contribution. So going back to, this was fiscal year 2012-2013, we were at 28,351 dollars for the Village of Indian Head Park. Current years, we, we budgeted or thought would be 24,807, and actually they had to do a correction, so it's really going to be 24,617, so we're about 200 dollars less. And then they're going to reduce it further in the 2014-2015. They're requesting approval for levying 24,192 dollars for the Village of Indian Head Park. A question was asked of me, by actually trustee Whittenburg, of individual participants from the village in CEASPAR, and I asked the staff at CEASPAR to provide you such. So they gave us basically the last 10-year history. We are currently, and this was through coming up to this last summer, their fiscal year, I believe it starts June 1st, so prior to that, we had 26 participants. Whereas in the two prior years, we had 52, 2009 to 2010, we had 54. And just on the chart there, if you take the, if you take a participant, one person, and that person participates in two programs, it equates to two participation units in the total participation count. So, and then the service hours is just how many hours those programs for that, for the individuals we have that CEASPAR is providing. So in the case of 2011 to 2012, we had 52 participants and 112 participation units. They provided 1,475 service hours to our residents for the money that the village provides to CEASPAR to do that. It did drop down this year, I understand it was because they had, you know, one of the places, there was a changeover in staff and they didn't have people that could accommodate people going to programs, and plus a number of our residents were then not eligible to participate in some programs that they would have in the past. But I'm told that already from this year, starting this summer going forward, that the participation has basically rebounded. I don't want to say to the same level, but it's, it's much better than the, the chart indicates, that we dropped basically by 50% from year, two years ago to last year. That's all I have on, on the levy and our participation there. We've been a longstanding member, I don't know the number of years, but it would be my recommendation to the board that we pass the requested levy for CEASPAR for the fiscal year 2014 to 2015. Note, they're trying to be prudent with their expenses, the dollar amounts are going down, that they're levying just because our, our assessed valuation has gone down. Any questions or comments, trustees? Audience? Hearing none, the chair would entertain a motion to approve the resolution to approve the CEASPAR levy amount for the Village of Indian Head Park for fiscal year 2014-2015.
I'll make the motion.
Moved by trustee Bailey, is there a second?
Second.
Second by trustee Whittenburg. Roll call, please.
Trustee Bailey.
Yes.
Trustee Whittenburg.
Yes.
Trustee Schnafer.
Yes.
Trustee Walsh.
Yes.
Trustee Alaka.
Yes.
Trustee Hinshaw.
Yes.
Motion passed.
Okay, thank you. Next order of business is approval of the financial report for the month ending October 31, 2013, treasurer Bucette.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As you mentioned, tonight I have the financial report for the village for the month of October 2013. The revenues for the month of October were 381,814.30. The expenditures, 236,583.90. At the end of October 2013, the village had a home fund of 1,673,813.70. That's our report, Mr. Mayor.
And I note that a large part of the revenue came because we received the water revenues.
That is correct. That was 251,000 dollars when it's the water and sewer fund in the month of October.
Questions, comments, trustees?
Trustee, we got a summary through October 2013, six months. I don't know if this is the right time for a question for that, or does that come later?
Oh, that question today?
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't know what a better time would be.
I hope you have a copy down with me.
I don't either. That was, that was basically just so you knew where we were.
Okay, can I ask a question?
Sure.
If you don't have it in front of you, there's a sentence at the end, that says, "Budget finalized with a 69,000 deficit. When removing depreciation for purpose of this report, it finalized with a surplus of 24,000."
The reason I, the reason I did that is because I don't, this is basically a cash, I wanted you to see how we are doing cash wise, six months through the, halfway through the fiscal year. And the depreciation itself is not cash. I, if I listed that, I actually don't know how to list it because I don't make that entry. The others make it at the end of, well, they make it two months after the fiscal year ends.
So that depreciation was the water?
That was that 94,000 dollars.
Water, water.
Yeah, if I back that out of what it finished with, I'm just trying to get you a picture on that last page of where we are, six months after, you know, halfway through the fiscal year, cash wise, we would, if we added 94,000 for depreciation, which isn't cash, was not there, we would have finalized with a 24,000 dollar surplus, and it adds up six months, I don't have the number.
Yeah, good, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, anything else? Hearing none, then the chair would entertain a motion to approve the financial report for the month ending October 31, 2013.
Move.
Moved by trustee Schnafer, is there a second?
I second.
Second by trustee Alaka. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Can you, Chair, the ayes have it, motion carries, the report is approved. Thank you, treasurer Bucette. Next item is the approval of the minutes of the regular board meeting from November 14, 2013. Are there any corrections or additions on any of the first three pages? Four or five?
Page five, there's a, on the middle paragraph, it's just a, the title is, let's see, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, or 10?
Page nine again.
First full, first full paragraph, I guess, maybe the second before. Biggest paragraph on here, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven lines down, where it says, "He proposed putting the burden on people, not to do parts of a home rule, should be through a rule."
Yes.
And then two lines down, it says, "He noted that as a way to raise funds," and it should be there, I think that should be there. He noted there is a way to raise funds on a monthly basis.
Thank you. No change? Page 10? 11 or 12? Page 14? 15? Hearing none, the chair would entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the regular board meeting for November 14, 2013 as amended.
I'll make the motion.
Moved by trustee Bailey, is there a second?
A second.
Second by trustee Alaka. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Can you, Chair, the ayes have it, motion carries. Okay, next item is the appointments to the finance committee. As you know, we cast an ordinance last month establishing the finance committee. That's ordinance 2013-10. The finance, the ordinance provides for the appointment to the committee of two trustees, two staff, being the village administrator, Frank Alonso, who by the way, I didn't mention is, is out of town on personal leave. And the village administrators designate, and I think we've contemplated from the get go, and Frank has advised me, he would designate, is designating, they'd bring to be the other staff person on the committee. And then it would also include two residents from the community at large. The ordinance provides for the mayor to appoint a chairman and a secretary of the committee. I previously talked with them, but at this time, I will appoint trustee Schnafer as the chairperson, as he is the primary finance liaison for the board. And I had requested trustee Alakland to, if I could appoint her a secretary, and I quite frankly prefer to have the two trustees to be in these positions, and trustee Alakland consented to that, so I hereby appoint trustee Alakland as secretary to the finance committee. Further, as provided by statute, the administrator, Chief Alonso, is appointed to the committee as is date bring. And then as to the two at-large residents, that's by my appointment with the advice and consent of the trustees. As you know, we solicited applications from the residents through online and the smoke signals. I received six applicants, they being Terrence Coleman, John Corcoran, Tom Hovrish, Jim Hope, Shirley Yang, and Charles Zona. They submitted their applications, resumes, and I interviewed all of the people. And, you know, I have to say that I'm comfortable with all the people who applied, and I see John Corcoran is here, so thank you, John, for throwing your name in the hat. As, as has been mentioned before, we, you know, we're blessed with people with talent that want to step up. In any event, the downside, and I knew when we got the third applicant, that I had to disappoint somebody, they consider this disappointment, so it may be a blessing, but you don't know how this is going to go, but as I explained to all of them when I, when I contacted them to let them know of my choices, that, you know, they got to meet me close up, I got to meet them close up, and keep them in mind for something and try to put them to work for us and to make use of their talents for the village sooner rather than later. And I will work to see if we can't do that. But in the meantime, I've decided that I would like to appoint resident Terrence Coleman to the finance committee for a one-year term, and also Tom Hovrish for, also a resident, obviously, and also for a one-year term, as provided by statute. The trustees are automatically appointed for two-year terms, but not to exceed the end of the current village president's term, so we don't have a date designated for that on the agenda. Tom Hovrish is in the audience, Tom, if you could stand up and say hello, and thank you, appreciate it if you haven't, man, Tom's a wonderful guy, and I enjoyed our meeting, and appreciate your willingness to step up. Mr. Coleman had notified me at the time when I talked to him and told him I wanted to appoint him to the committee, a scheduling conflict tonight. I said, "That's fine, we're just, we're just dealing with the appointments. This is a busy time of the year, I think, as we all know." So, on the basis of the resumes and the input that I had from, through the interviews, that's how I wrapped up my conclusion. And at this time, all I think we need to do is entertain a motion to confirm my appointment of Terrence J. Coleman for a one-year term ending December 12, 2014. We're going to do these one at a time.
I'll make the motion.
Okay, made by trustee Walsh, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by trustee Bailey. Roll call.
Trustee Walsh.
Yes.
Trustee Bailey.
Yes.
Trustee Hinshaw.
No.
Trustee Alaka.
Yes.
Trustee Whittenburg.
Yes.
Let me say it again.